...in 2019. We'll start with the minutes of May 13th, 2019, our last board meeting. Are there any corrections or observations or comments on the minutes?
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as published or presented in the board packet, which is available online. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you, it passes. Warrants. We have warrants 48 to 51. Chris, you're the show.
48 is the regular accounts payable warrant. It was for $73,933.70. A and B were state fees, and 49 was payroll. So it was a total of $89,111.43. And of note, in that, number 48 warrant was $16,178 for Cushing, which was the parking lot in Fairbanks.
Right.
We had $3,263 and $62,200, engineering for capital improvement, Giles Hall and the fire station. And that's anything of note, unless anyone has any questions.
So that warrant was which warrant?
That was 48, 48A, B, and 49.
48 and 49.
For $89,111.43.
Can I have a motion on that, Chris?
I move that we approve this warrant for $89,111.43. Warrants 48, 48A and B, and 49.
Oh, second. It's been moved and seconded to approve warrants 48 through 49, inclusive at $89,111.43. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Thank you. Another?
Yeah. Warrant 50, A and B, and 51. 50 is the regular warrant for $358,874.43. A and B were state fees, and 51 was payroll. So it's a total of $400,422.34. And we had $600 for the cemeteries because we had to move a body because he was infringing on somebody else's plot.
Okay.
We had...
Which item was that, Chris?
That was 212.
Thank you.
And then Cushing Construction had some washout work, 2418. Dave's Appliance, $93,758.7 for the library heat pumps. And we had engineering for the fire station, $5,512.50. And First Park for $12,048.73. And engineering for Giles Hall at $34.95. Safety sensors for the fire overhead door, $3,156. And of course, the school, $296,413.34. So we have a total warrant of $400,422.34. I move we accept this warrant. It's 50, 50A and B, and 51.
Okay, it's been moved, and do I have a second? It's been moved and seconded to approve the warrant. Let me see if I have the number correctly. $400,122.34?
Correct.
So is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Great.
So we'll ask the board to sign that one, because the first one was approved, and this one does need to be our signatures.
Okay.
Chris should have a copy for you.
Great. We'll move on to select board communications. I'm extremely happy to see John Parent here tonight. And without further ado, Catherine, would you perhaps make some remarks?
I would be happy to.
Thank you.
As soon as I get my screen to do just what I wanted to. So, we have a slightly larger crowd than we often have tonight. And John, that's for a special reason. I'm not sure which order to do this in. So I'm going to present you with this plaque first, and then I'm going to embarrass you. So we are awarding you a 2019 Spirit of America Award. And this is what I wrote.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. "John has worked on committees and boards and other volunteer activities here in Reedfield and in his former residence in Green for an excess of 25 years. He is a voice of reason, speaking with knowledge and enthusiasm in all groups he is associated with. John grew up in Lewis in Maine and began his life of service by joining the Marine Corps. Once settled in Green, Maine, John served on the school board for eight years. When he moved to Reedfield, he continued public service by joining our road committee for eight years and then the budget committee for six years. This was followed by a three-year term as a select board member. John is not just a former Marine, but one who gathers with his platoon mates annually in support of our armed forces. He was never one to just be a member of a board or committee, but one who fully embraced the mission of the group and who would put forth extra effort on special projects and events. Whether it was a workshop on a topic that needed more time devoted to solving, or a training session to learn more about a task that needed to be handled, or an event that needed extra hands to be run, John always volunteered his time and expertise. He began our Reedfield Roadside Cleanup Day four years ago and ran the event superbly. He organized needed supplies, assigned roads to pairs of volunteers, delivered trash collected to the transfer station, and provided lunch to all when we finished. This is a tradition we are carrying on thanks to John. In the spirit of this award, John is the first who comes to mind as deserving of this recognition." So thank you very much.
Thanks.
I was going to say something, but I don't know if I can.
Come on, I did it.
No, I want to thank the voters of Reedfield for the opportunities that they gave me, both on the select board, on the road committee, on the budget committee. I enjoyed every minute of it, although some of it was a little rough, but it comes with the territory. And I certainly wish the future boards the very best. I think we've got a good board now. We've got a good administration. Our town manager is probably one of the best in the state. Our office staff is excellent, top-notch, and our volunteers are what makes this town really run properly. So...
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a good thing you showed up tonight. This wouldn't have been the same without you.
Kind of had to show up.
We were hoping so.
Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Thank you. And I just want to express my appreciation of John as well. I don't get really hot-headed too much, but he's a good elder statesman to give me some advice now and then, and so I've appreciated his counsel. And I really appreciated his depth of knowledge about the town from road committee and budget backgrounds. So, you know, again, I can't think of anybody more deserving either, John, so I really appreciate everything that you've done for me.
Oh, you're quite welcome.
That's great work.
You do a heck of a job.
Thank you.
I have one more thing.
Please.
I don't know if people are aware, but we changed the procedure, I guess, a couple years ago, or last year?
Couple years.
A couple, two years ago, that after elections, select board members would take their seat immediately so that we wouldn't have a... What do they call that?
A lame duck.
A lame duck war going on. And so my seat is up, and so is John's for election. The town vote is tomorrow, so this could be my last meeting, and I just wanted to say thank you to all the people who have elected me in the past and supported me. I hope that I am here to serve you further, but if I'm not, it was a really good run, and I appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Any other board members have anything they would like to say tonight? No, I guess we said it all. We do have a volunteer appreciation event that will be coming up that's still in the planning stage, as I'm assuming.
It is in the planning, and we expect it'll be a brunch June 29th, guessing around nine or 10:00. But it'll be very similar to what we had done in past years. People really enjoyed the brunch, and it was a good opportunity for folks to get together. So we do have a few more Spirit of America awards as well, but I thought it was appropriate to get John some recognition here at his last meeting, so...
Exactly.
We wanted to embarrass him.
Right. And actually, John, if you're... You know, on June 29th, we'd love to have you and with the other Spirit of America recipients, because we'll probably have some press there, and we'd really like to then give it to you in front of the whole community. So with that said, I'm going to move on to the appointment of Jennifer Boniford out of order to library board of trustees. The reason I'm taking a couple things out of order is we have a public hearing at 6:45 in just a few minutes. So is Jennifer here? Jennifer, how are you?
Jennifer, how are you?
Step right up to the podium.
And I moved right in the corner. Sorry.
But that's okay. So Jennifer, basically, this is your first appointment, I believe, to town committee. So welcome. As you probably just heard, we really rely on volunteers, and so welcome. So this is really an opportunity for any members of the board to ask you any questions they have. It's kind of an informality, if you will, and to let you say anything you would like to in reference to wanting to serve on the library board. So I'll turn it to you first.
I'm better off if you ask questions. I just want to work for the library. I'm a big supporter of our town library, and I just wanted to help it make it better.
Great, great. I think we're not going to have any more questions.
Is this really a 20-day appointment?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering about the term.
Yeah, because the way we have things set up, we do have these kind of appointments that are temporary, or not temporary, but for the very end of someone's term. But then we can have folks apply for reappointment immediately if they so choose, and move ahead with a three-year appointment.
You wouldn't have to come in again.
I'm sorry.
You wouldn't have to come in again.
That's okay.
But Jennifer, you do want to serve for three years.
Yes.
So three years and three days.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm going to move the appointment of Jennifer Boniford?
Fond, F-O-N-D.
F-O-N-D, okay, Bonifond. To the library board of trustees for a term ending 6/30/2019, with the intention of an additional term following that.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I just want to add quickly that Jennifer has the Building Bridges Childcare up in Kentville School.
Okay.
My children went there, and I think she's an exceptional leader and someone who bring a lot to the town of Reedfield Library, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Well, thank you. All in favor of this appointment? You're duly appointed.
Thank you.
Unanimously duly.
If you don't like your job in 20 days, you can give it up.
Thank you.
I was traveling last week, and I worked at four different little town libraries. That's where I kind of prefer to work when I'm away from the office. So a couple of them in Vermont, one of them in New York, and another one in Massachusetts. So it's pretty cool seeing what other small libraries do in small towns. So we're going to open a public hearing here at 6:45. The public hearing is for the purpose of the application of catering permit for Robert Laster, DBA, Prestini's Catering, Winthrop, Maine, on Monday, June 10th at 6:45. That's right now, at the Reedfield Town Office for an event at the Reedfield Meeting House. This hearing is in compliance with Title 28A, Section 653, MRS. Is Mr. Laster here? Is somebody representing the event here?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Just to clarify, Mr. Laster did say that he might not be able to make it or might be late. His son is playing in a divisional or some higher-level baseball tournament, and so has the commitment otherwise. But I did speak with him about this, and I do believe there is somebody from the meeting house here to present on the event, which is really the core issue, probably.
Great. Then we'll proceed with that. I reviewed the application, and as I'm sure you have as well, and the application is complete, so I do have a couple of questions. So is there somebody to basically tell us a little bit about the event?
Sure, I can do that.
Okay, and we'll ask you to go to the microphone. Thank you.
I'm Jim Tukey. I live on Fairgrounds Road, and I'm president of the board at the Meeting House. We have eight events in our summer series at the Meeting House this year. Six are on Tuesdays, and two of them are on Saturdays. And we'd like to have wine and beer available for three of the Tuesday events. And this is just for the first event, which is June 18th with Carolyn Carter. Hope to see you all there. Robert Laster has got the license, and he will also have snacks and be in a tent outside. And he will open, I think, just the event starts at 7:00. He'll open like quarter or 20 of, and then at an intermission, which should be around 8:45, for about 15 minutes, and that's the extent of it.
Okay, great. Are there any questions for Sean?
I have just one. There's a diagram in the application says that there has to be a fence around the area, so will there be some sort of plastic fence or something that's enclosing that canopy?
Oh, I didn't realize that. I guess we'll have to figure something...
What says a stanchion or fence? What does a stanchion count as?
It lists the little uprights with the ribbon between them typically.
It's really...
So a few fence posts with the rope between them would count?
Okay, we can do that. No problem.
Garden stakes with a rope.
Yes, okay, we can do that.
Okay, trying to make this easy.
Yes, great. Thank you.
And Jim, do you anticipate any parking arrangements that are beyond the ordinary for that event?
Well, we have our own parking lot, which is very limited. We also have permission to use the Maple Tree School parking lot, and also the library parking lot. And we have event parking signs, and also we can use the baseball field if we feel that's needed. So we have four event parking signs, that's big signs to put up, and we have two parking attendants. And we realize parking is a little bit of a challenge there, so we're trying to be upfront with it.
Great, thank you.
So your parking attendant keeps them off the road?
Hopefully, yes.
As much as possible.
That's their job. That's their job. I mean, if we have 250 people come, which is probably not likely, we may have a problem, but I think we can handle it.
No, it sounds like we certainly can, and I really appreciate the attention on the parking end. Is there any other comments or questions for Jim?
How did the parking work for your last event?
Last...
Tuesday.
Tuesday. It worked pretty good. It worked pretty good. I think we had about 40 people, I don't know how many cars, I'm not sure, but we filled our lot. We didn't quite fill the school and the library, but it was probably like two-thirds full.
Great. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, just want to say thank you for you and your group of volunteers who are doing something with the Union Meeting House. It's nice to see these old buildings being brought back instead of just leveled and some new building put up, so, you know, good job there, everybody.
Well, thank you. The big news is, if all goes well, we get our financing, we start on the eyesore, the steeple, next year.
Yay!
Praise the roof, right?
Right.
Okay. I don't think there are any additional questions, so I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and then we'll move on to... We're taking everything out of order tonight. New business, because we're going to consider this catering permit right away, so people that are here just for that, they can leave. So we're moving on to new business, which is 1919. Consider catering permit application for Prestini's Catering for an event at the Reedfield Union Meeting House, and that's as stated in the application, and it is for June 18th.
Eighteenth.
And I'm going to move that we approve that catering permit. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the event permit. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. Okay, great. If you were here for the short show, you can leave. If you're here for the long haul, it's really not going to be a long haul tonight. We're going to get through this meeting pretty quickly. So we will go back to... Were there any other select board communications that were not all about John, you know? No? Okay, good. We'll move on to staff reports. Eric, floor is yours.
All right, I'll try to be quick. We did talk about the announcement for the volunteer appreciation brunch. We'll have notices going out direct mail to our volunteers and email the minors as well in the next week, to try to give at least a couple weeks' notice for folks. But I always enjoy that event, and it really is a great time and a great way to celebrate volunteerism in the community with the folks that make things happen. So I think it's great to share that. Let's see, I'll start with maintenance and infrastructure. We had a very heavy, wet spring, but, as you all know, right? But despite that, our roads are drying out fairly well, and we did get our first pass of grading done. I expect that we might have needed some additional touch-up, but not yet. I think if any place, we might need some more on the loose road, but we are keeping an eye on that, and it's actually firmed up pretty well. We do have some road sweeping remaining. We have not issued any payment to the contractor. They are outside of where I would like to see them as far as completing that work. It's just a few areas here and there, but the folks that are affected by it certainly would like to see the areas in front of their house cleaned up, just as everybody else in town did, so we are still working on that. Road striping has been initiated, and we are painting the crosswalks, in-road markings, things like the railroad crossings, curbs, and other stop bars, things that are not what we consider the long lines or the fog lines and the yellow center lines. Those are done every other year. The in-road markings need a lot more attention. They're done every year, so those crosswalks, as you see, get worn out pretty quickly. Let's see, we have a panel meeting with the uptext and engineers for the library and fire station project, following that public hearing we had a few weeks ago. I appreciate folks attending that and asking questions, and also folks that have been keeping an eye on that. We did discuss the need to change the pitch and actually have a pitch on that additional bay, along with a few other components that were discussed. One thing I want to mention about that project is we had originally talked about doing the heat pumps at the library as a component of that. The library board of directors wanted to move forward more quickly and get ahead of some of this hot weather that we've been having, so, and I don't blame them, that was grant-funded, so we do have the option in the future, perhaps, now that that work has been completed, freeing up for additional cosmetic work or additional support work for the library, for things that they would have, would not have been able to accomplish otherwise. So I do want to thank them for taking care of that. And there's a lot of other work going on as well at the library. Volunteers painted the circulation area. We have grant funds that have been expended on a new floor, and there are new desks for the circulation area being installed, built and installed in the next couple weeks. So real changes and real investments, and I'm really optimistic that once we continue to invest in the little things, we can get the big thing, the roof, taken care of. So I fully expect that we'll be able to make that happen. Let's see, other projects that are ongoing, we have an RFP out, Request for Proposals for Work at the Torsey Pond Bridge. We are working in conjunction with the Torsey Pond Association to coordinate our two projects. We own the bridge, they own the dam. It's one piece of concrete with an imaginary line somewhere near the sluiceway, so we're having to be creative in how we work together, but we've done well so far, and we'll have bids or proposals due at the end of this month for work in 2020 in the fall after Labor Day. So that's been an interesting project to work on, considering that we just are starting to, the final stretches of work on the Marinahoke Lake Dam, which is a much larger project down water. Let's see, the beach will officially open this weekend, so anybody that, if you haven't got your beach passes, please get them. We've started maintenance, and we will have at least a couple of staff down there through a couple of different programs, so get your beach passes.
Would you like a question now or later?
Now's fine.
My understanding is that the beach is going to run differently this year? We're not going to have someone who's there consistently?
No, we should. We will have somebody there probably at least 40 hours a week. We might have some additional time as well. It all depends on how things shake out. We won't be having a superintendent down there. Programming is going to be, as opposed to having the superintendent manage the programming, the rec board has kind of volunteered to step in and manage a lot of that programming, but the inspecting of stickers and checking for passes and all that is going to be a priority, maybe not 60 hours like what we had last year, probably a close to that anyway. But it will be a little bit different, but not that much different. I think that the rec board stepping up to lower cost for the town is helpful. They're also looking at having somebody who is a certified lifeguard. We originally wanted swim lessons. We tried again for a few months to find somebody, but it's been proving a lot more challenging than we had hoped. But we do wish and desire, and hopefully will, have a lifeguard, someone who's certified as a lifeguard down there.
Great.
So a little bit different.
Thank you.
Sorry for the long answer.
Perfect. I only had to ask one question.
All right, good. And we have several other projects, capital projects, ongoing. There's always something happening. We're working on getting things ready for improvements to the parking area out front so that this November, when we have another election, perhaps at the state level, or not an election, but bowling, and then again in 2020, we can have handicap accessible front doors. We're going to have to regrade the parking lot, but there's all kinds of things happening in town, and I think that we're doing a great job of being good stewards of the resources we have, and I think that's also reflected in the upcoming vote. Tomorrow, Tuesday, June 11th, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., we are open, and we'd love to see you here with your neighbors, participating in our democracy. That's my other announcement. I'm going to talk about administration and personnel really quickly. We are preparing for tax commitment, which is the other side of town meeting. We expect to have a full 1% or more increase in valuation, which is very helpful. That helps keep taxes low, and it's actually exceeding what our normal projection would be, so that has contributed to some of that reduction that we expect in the middle rate on the town side. The repair and improvement of the security at the transfer, excuse me, the town office is complete. We have a new alarm system that allows the upstairs and downstairs to be handled separately, which before we could not do that, and if somebody rented the hall, when the alarm system was shut off, it shut off everything. And so now we have better security for our core office space. And let's see, a first draft operations manual for the transfer station has been reviewed by the... And let's see, a first draft operations manual for the transfer station has been reviewed by the Solid Waste and Recycling Committee. That was a long time coming, but I want to thank Catherine for pushing me to continue to get that done. And we're going to have, I really do want to thank her. She was persistent and supportive at the same time, so. But we do have a second draft coming up that'll be reviewed in July, so happy to see that moving forward. And that's my town manager's report, if there are any other questions.
I have one, I don't know if it fits better in the treasurer's report, but the revenue sharing has been proposed to be increased. Has the legislature voted on that yet?
The legislature has and they supported it. I believe it's going to the governor now.
She hasn't signed it yet, right?
I don't believe she has, but that's where it is in process.
And that was for more than what we had put in the budget?
It was, and that will also help. I haven't done the calculation on the exact value of that. I'm a little bit shy on that until we get a signature. But the fact that the legislature working collaboratively passed it is a very good sign. And I think that we do owe a lot of thanks to municipal association and our legislators and anybody that called and said, "We need more money for the towns because it's coming out of our pockets and going into state coffers and we'd like to keep some more of that local." So that's what happened.
So that will show up when the assessors meet to do the actual?
We'll know by then.
I hope so. Although in the past, the municipal, the state budget has been on the fringe, but I think we'll have it this year.
That would be awesome.
Yeah, yeah. So any other questions or I can move right into the treasurer's report?
Are they doing the same thing with the school funding, Jim?
I don't know. I don't know.
Kind of nice, because that's where we take a real big.
Yeah.
Valuation does affect the formulas, though.
Yep.
There's some benefit there.
It is a complicated formula.
And the last budget pass was quite a fair reduction from where they started.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Yeah, I think we're in the range of 3% to 4% as opposed to 5+. So it is definitely lower than what I had then. So I'll start off, check reconciliations completed through May 31. Our accounts are unbalanced and we did have one voided check that came through that we had to, we made a payment for an old copier lease and the new lease kicked in and so we had to avoid that. So you will see an amount of $161.41 that shows up as a check, a void check in our accounts. Budget, we, I did also talk about budget here, but budget voting is tomorrow. Articles, the articles are in many ways the budget. We have a few other items as well, but big day for the budget tomorrow. Cash management, we have developed a new cash management procedure that has been included in that draft transfer station operations manual for cash management at the transfer station. Off-site cash is always a question and a concern. I'm not saying anything's been going wrong at all. We've done a very good job. We have triplicate receipts and we have other safeguards in place, but we have needed to, after talking with the auditors, tighten things up a bit. Outside of the transfer station, the beach is another area where we have off-site cash. So we've batted around ideas of going with punch tickets or other mechanisms that take away the need to transfer cash outside of the town office, which have pros and cons. And I think we'll continue to talk about those, but I just wanted to pass along to the board and the public that we are keeping an eye on those things and trying to make sure that wherever money is handled, that it's handled appropriately. Comments on the month of May? We are seeing a bit more stabilization for the year-to-date numbers. We still have some anomalous stuff coming through on the month-to-month, so May of 2019 versus May of 2018. We had a sizable increase in revenue for real estate payments month over month, but for the year, we're actually up just about 1%. So that normalized pretty quickly. As far as other net revenues, we have seen a small reduction in transfer station revenues. That's been reflected in the year-to-date and actually I expect that we'll be down about 10% for the transfer station for the year. I'm not entirely sure why that is, it's going to take some more looking, but that is one of the few areas where we see a reduction in revenues. Interest on taxes was actually up quite a bit for the month, but down for the year. And anytime I see interest payments on taxes go down, I think it's a good thing because that means that people are having more ability to pay and paying on time. So that's always a good sign. As far as expenditures go for the month and year-to-date, we have continued spending in both areas on capital improvements and roads. And so those areas are up significantly over past years and so you'll see that reflected in this report. Another item that is up this month only and down for the year would be protection. We had expenditures for equipment repair as well as an ambulance service payment that came in this month as opposed to another month. So that made things a little bit unusual. But overall, revenues are up, expenditures are up, things appear to be balancing and I think we're a little bit tighter than where we've been in years past, which isn't necessarily a bad thing. That's my report for month of May and year-to-date.
Well, it can reflect more accurate budgeting.
Budget, yeah.
I hope so, yeah. There's always things that come out of the blue, but I think that we're getting a little bit better every year.
Any questions for Eric on the treasurer's report? Okay, we'll move on to, thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
We'll move on to public communication. So members of the public who would want to address the select board, just go up to the microphone and give us your name and make your comment or question. Any, buddy?
Nobody wants to trip over everybody.
That was a plan. Oh, I will. Okay, thank you for pointing that out. Okay, so I need to note for boards, committees, commissions and departments that we received and are entering into the record of the library board minutes of April 3, 2019, the conservation commission minutes of April 9, 2019, trails committee minutes of April 23, 2019. I do read all those minutes and as usual, there's just a lot of activity and work going on, so thank you very much. So because I sort of digress there for a minute, if there's still anybody that wants to address the select board, you're more than welcome to do so. Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to, have I missed anything else? I only have one item left for my part of the agenda. Good, okay. So we have 19-120, which is to consider a special event liquor license application for Kentsville School. This is, well, liquor license is never pro forma, but it is for an event that has run for a very long time. It's their annual reunion, it's a one-time, one-event license once a year. So this is their reunion 2019 at Kentsville School. The liquor license application is complete as usual with all the backup information. Either, and we waived the public hearing for this because this is one we've had several times before.
I'll attend and make sure they're doing everything right.
There we go. The select board is always on the job. Okay, great. Could I have a motion in reference to this application?
I move that we accept the application for a liquor license for Kentsville School for their reunion on the 22nd.
Oh, second?
Yep, it's a multi-day actually, 21st to 23rd. Okay, great. And it's been moved and seconded, so is there any discussion on this application? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. I do want to remind everybody, as Eric and a couple of other board members did so aptly, that tomorrow is election day. It's, you know, one of those off-year elections, the governor's not running, the president's not running. But your school board, your select board and your town financial budget is what is on that ballot, so it's very important. And I would love everybody, regardless of what you're going to vote for or vote against or whatever, please turn out and join us tomorrow in your town democracy and vote. So, eight to eight, right?
Eight to eight.
Upstairs, that's why we're meeting downstairs tonight.
That's why it's so crowded and hot.
Rowdy, crowded conditions. Could I take a motion to adjourn, please?
So who?
It's been moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn, all in favor? Thank you.